Lands, Lord, and we pray, Lord, that you will be remembered here, Lord, as we approach this Christmas season, remember that you are King of Kings and Lord of Lords. Thank you, Lord, for your presence in our lives, and, Lord, be with these here in our city, in our community. We pray this, Lord, that you hear our prayers in your name. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We call a meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Rupert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Here.
Speedall.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Here.
With that, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes?
Yeah, good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Item number 10 under the consent agenda, I've been asked to remove that from the consent agenda, and it makes most sense to include that under the ordinances and resolutions. So that number 10 on consent will become number six on ordinances and resolutions this evening.
With then, I look for a motion to recommend or approve the agenda for this evening's meeting.
I'll follow, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brad. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign. The motion is approved. There are no public hearings this evening, there are no bids to award, so we move on to the petition and communications and pollinator-friendly designation proclamation. At the committee of the hall, we had a group that taught about pollinator-friendly communities and asked that the city adopt a proclamation to do, to make us all aware of how the birds and the bees are a functional part of our society. And it's, I won't read the entire pollinator-friendly community, it will be on the website for all, but I think, you know, the pertinent points are that, you know, it's the community, they're committing to avoid the use of insecticides, including systemic insecticides on their property, avoiding plant, avoiding the plants and flowering plants that are treated, planting and maintaining pollinators, supporting forage on the property, and adopting organic or chemical-free lawns and landscapes. And I think this is something that, you know, people, people don't realize how, how important bees are, particularly to, to the ecological systems that we have, and so I think tonight it's, it was approved at the committee hall, and I think tonight, look for a motion to, do we need a motion to, no, we just would like to introduce it as, we'd just like to proclaim that Fergus Falls will become a pollinator-friendly community, and Ben Shai will be able to sign this on his return, and we'll commit him to it. With that, we move on to the consent agenda, and I think that's up on the screen. Item 10 is being removed to become H6. If anybody else has anything that they wish to discuss, we could take that off the consent agenda. If not, I would look for a resolution to approve the consent agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. With that, call for a roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
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 Speedall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
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 With that, we'll move on to section H, ordinance and resolutions. There's a first reading, ordinance 77, 17th series of the city charter amendment amendments, and we're looking just to introduce that this evening.
I'll introduce that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. So it is introduced. Do we need any comments from the charter commission representatives here?
Unless they want to.
Unless they want to.
I can reread it.
No. Most of what they had were just language changes anyway, so.
So with that, we'll move on to item two, which is the second reading of ordinance 76, 17th, 7th series, rather, home occupations. Unless anybody's got any questions, we'll have a roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
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 Speedall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion is approved. And then moving on to item three, which is a resolution approving a setback variance for the properties located at 401 and 411 South Tower Road, as requested by Unique Opportunities on behalf of the property owner, H9 LLC. We'll call upon Ryan.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and members of the council. For the record, my name is Ryan Beedlock, City Planner with the City of Fergus Falls. Before you this evening are two items. The first one before you is a request for a variance for the legacy apartments on Tower Road. Just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, the variance is a maximum of a 10-foot encroachment into the front setback along Tower Road. So the building is still located on the property, it is just within the required front setback, which for the zoning district is 35 feet off of Tower Road. Majority of the building encroaches approximately two feet into the setback. There is a small portion of the building, it would be at the southwest corner of the building that encroaches 10 feet into the setback. Kind of give just a little bit of history of kind of how we got here. So on October 8th, the board of zoning recommended approval of the variance. This went before the city council on October 15th. City council continued the variance request and tabled it, and the applicant agreed to extend the 60-day deadline to December 28th. The council also set a joint meeting with the city council and the planning commission to discuss this item, as well as the plat, which will be your next item. On October 29th, the council and the planning commission held their joint meeting. Out of that meeting, there was a direction from the council that both the planning commission and the board of zoning would hear, rehear their respective cases of the board of zoning. Was to hear that on November 13th. They did not have quorum, so on December 10th, that went back before them. They did reaffirm their recommendation for approval for the variance unanimously, and that is where we are at today with the variance. So it's before you this evening to make a decision. You can make a decision to recommend approval or denial of it. You could table it, but at this point, we are running up against that 60-day deadline, and an applicant would have to agree to extend that, and at this point, from the conversation staff has had with the applicant there, hearing that they would not, they would not sign another extension. So at this point, we kind of are at either a recommendation, approval, or denial. If you do deny it, there would need to be findings that would be constructed in concert with the city attorney on the reasons for that denial. That's staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Brad?
I am going to vote in this, excuse me, I'm going to vote for this. I'm not in favor of it. I do believe that there was a lot more that went on here than what's out, and I do believe that we can't force them to tear down a building, otherwise I probably wouldn't vote for it. But there needs to be something put in place so something like this never happens again.
We all offer a resolution for approval. Jim is up. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Scott. Any other comments that anybody wants to make?
Just one other, Your Honor. I think, I just learned tonight that, we've known before, the code has been insufficient to deal with this development, you could say, and so things have had to have been done, you know, maybe improvised or whatever. I also agree with, you know, Councilman Thompson's comments that there, you know, there, it would have, could have been done better and should have been. I personally don't agree with it, but I don't see any, there's nothing in our code that allows us to levy a fine in this case or anything that would be appropriate. So I am going to be voting for it. I don't agree with, you know, the fact that we haven't done it well. There's a lot of people that have made different, there's, other actions have happened that we, you know, we can't go back and, it's water under the bridge, but, so I will be voting in favor, although I just don't, you know, it's an uncomfortable, it's an uncomfortable vote to vote in favor of something you don't approve, but, yeah.
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 I just want to say, I'm not, I'm not here to put blame on anybody. I'm just, I'm here to, so that we go forward and have things in place so this doesn't happen again. I think at this point, we need to approve it. Things happened. It happened in the past, there's nothing we can do about that now. I think we should approve it and make sure that it doesn't happen again.
I'll just go along. The planning commission task force pretty much talked about that for the last three meetings, what we're going to do, and this last meeting, we've got some things pretty well put in place, I believe it's going to make this a better process, that this will not happen again. Not that it was done by our city wrong, it's just that it covers all the bases, so if something is wrong, we know where to look.
My only comment is I, I actually will be voting against it, but part of that is because I believe it will set a precedence in the sense that other people can do this, but I acknowledge and understand what everyone else is saying, so. Unless anybody else has got any additional comments, do a roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Speedall.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
The variance is approved.
Moving on to item four, which is the resolution approving the preliminary plat for Unique Opportunities LLC, on the condition that the front setback encroachment is granted by the Fergus Falls City Council. Obviously, the setback has been approved this evening, so we should be able to move on and discuss the plat. So with that, back to Ryan.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, members of the council. So this is the second part of this package here this evening, so just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, this is a, it would be a post subdivision, three lots of the legacy apartments property, it's approximately just over eight and a quarter acres on Tower Road. The property currently is exempt from having to be platted. The only reason why there is the desire to be platted is to separate the apartment building from the rest of the site, which will aid if, in terms of amending any future TIF agreements and things like that, to ensure that it is only for the property where the actual building itself is constructed. The applicant has stated they have no plans to construct any additional phases of this project, so by divesting themselves from, from those other two parcels, that's what part of this is. The other part of it is that also, as part of this plat would be, a small portion of the subject property contains an easement for the Glacial Edge Trail there, and so that would be granted as part of this plat as well. I did want to also just remind this body that this is just a preliminary plat, it does not give any type of legal entitlement, this is only allowing for them to now move to the next stage and actually prepare that, that final plat, which would come back before you if this was approved this evening. It is under 120-day deadline under state law, which does expire on December 28th. To raise, the planning commission did recommend approval of it. Fast forward to December 10th, they did rescind the recommendation for approval and made what is called a recommendation, a motion of no recommendation, and they wanted three items to go on the record, and that is that their discomfort with the variance, their discomfort with the TIF, and the statement that they would like to see that trail located completely on some city right-of-way that's beside their property. And if that, for some reason, is impossible, because there is the area where it actually has to go on to the legacy apartments, there is a large wetland there in the way, so that is why the trail takes a jog to the north there. And if that is impossible, that, that there is no special consideration that would be provided for any future development to any future owners. So that is what planning commission has set before you as their recommendation, and that wraps up staff's presentation.
Any questions of Ryan?
Well, I think we need a motion first before we go through that, and I will make the, I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions?
First of all, on the Glacial Edge Trail, I was involved in helping submit the application for that, and I don't recall that the Glacial Edge Trail actually runs through this property.
It's a, a future extension of it.
This is a future extension, just so the record shows, this is not the Glacial Edge Trail in any way that was applied for, and the extension is not one we applied for when we were designated as Glacial Edge Trail. This would be a city extension at this point, has nothing to do with the state trail, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the second question is, is the, I'm hearing a little bit of, that, does this, if we are stating this here, you know, okay, it's a city extension, but does this obligate us in any way in the future to make some kind of a payment or deal with the property owners if part of that is, they don't want it on there, they just said, but if part of it is on there now, when we approve that, aren't we creating a complication for ourselves? If they're disagreeing with it and it's already on there, are we going to pay them for that then, in addition to the TIF that we're granting and things?
It's, it's, it's part of, they have placed it on there, and they, they have, they have agreed to it, and there is, it's similar to any other type of easement, is that the, the ownership does not transfer, the city would just have the right to be able to, to have a trail easement go through there. City would construct the trail, there would be no future, you know, anything that the developer would be doing, they're just providing a small sliver of that property, allowing a city trail to go through there. Andrew or Rolf may be able to.
Yeah, basically, it's an area that's dedicated to public use, and if they wanted to have that removed from the plat at a future date, they would have to come to the city and make that request to the city. It wouldn't necessarily result in any payments to them, because they would be the ones that are requesting it, or that their property be released, not the other way.
I think that was from the planning commission, that's why they wanted a no opinion or the lawyer, like, because they didn't, the planning commission didn't want to see the trail being on the property, not, not the current property owner, right?
Yeah, it is from the, the planning commission, and it's that concern that they, they wanted to make sure that there's no, there's no, you know, no understanding that the, a future property owner could hold over the city.
Any other questions, Ryan? So you feel comfortable that we're covered with the easement?
Yeah, this is very common, this happens all the time.
Well, and, Your Honor, let me just mention too, the easement is tied to the development agreement, which is what we're going to talk about next. So if we're, if we don't find terms that are acceptable to the city under the development agreement, this trail easement's likely not going to end up in the final plat, but that's what's obligating them to include the trail easement on the final plat, is because we are in a development agreement with them, which they are in default of, that contemplates the fact that they have to grant this easement to the city of Fergus Falls. So depending on how we proceed on maybe the next item, and I don't mean to complicate the issue, but that's what the easement is attached to, is the development agreement that we're going to be talking to next.
Any, any other comments or questions? With that, then we'll call for the roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Speedall.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. We'll move on to item five, which is the resolution authorizing the execution of an amended and restated development agreement and the assignment and assumption of the amended and restated agreement to unique opportunities.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
You'll make the, you'll make that resolution?
Yeah. It goes to staff. Is that, is that going to staff, or is that going to, that reamended? I'm not sure what that, clarification?
Your Honor, Councilmember Speedall, the, this action would be identical to the action that was on the October 15th meeting, so this, if you were to make the resolution that's on the agenda this evening, you would be approving the amended agreement that's in your packet, which contemplates changing the terms of the agreement from four buildings and 180 units to one building, 36 units, and amends the TIF amount to 389,100 in principal with interest on top of that. So that, that would be approving the agreement, not sending anything back to staff, so I just, I'm not sure if that was your intention or not, but that would be what the resolution on the agenda was.
No, I was looking at amended, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I would have said that it, with going back to staff to make changes in the, in the agreement, so I will, I'll withdraw that, that support at this point unless someone else wants to make.
You'll make a different resolution than the resolution that's written?
Yeah, I'd rather, yeah, I misread this, I thought it was stating an amendment.
Your Honor, can I just maybe speak to the item real quick for maybe, maybe it'll help the public to understand what our options are. So as you all know, we entered into a development agreement with the developer, with the original understanding that they were going to construct four phases to the project with 180 units. We issued a notice of default because that agreement contemplated the fact that they had to follow all the zoning and building codes of the city of Fergus Falls, which we just realized that they weren't, or we just acknowledged that they weren't in compliance with, because we had to grant a variance. And they also are in default because they transferred the property without the city of Fergus Falls' consent, which was complicated, or which was contemplated under this agreement. And so with that being said, we have three options before us this evening, and that's to suspend our performance under the original agreement until all defaults are cured, and at that time, the city would have to fulfill the obligations of the original agreement. The city may cancel and rescind the original agreement in TIF note, or they can direct us to do something different, such as an amendment to that original agreement. This is, what's in your packet is one example of what that may look like, and that would be contemplating giving them the entirety of the TIF related to one building over a 20-year period based on the actual property value associated with the building that's built. So you have three options in front of you. You know, I would urge any option to contemplate the fact that we just approved the preliminary plat, and there still needs to be a final plat that's approved, and, and any agreement may ensure that that's covered. I think that's really all that we have to share. If there's any questions, we can answer those, we're all for aye, but those are really the three options that we have before us this evening. The other thing I will note, Your Honor, is that this does not have an expiration date, so to speak. We aren't set to make the first payment of TIF until the middle of 2019, and because they're not, because they're in default of the agreement that we currently have in place, we would recommend that we wouldn't make those payments and ask the council to suspend our performance under that agreement if they decided to stay on that course.
One other side note, so the amended and restated agreement that is in your packet, that was analyzed by Springstead Incorporated, our municipal advisor, Tom Denaway, I believe he was here at one meeting, I wasn't here at that meeting when he was here, but in other words, staff didn't just come up with these figures out of thin air. That amended and restated agreement was analyzed by Springstead, as far as looking at what tax increment would be generated by the one-building project parceled off, and then they did review is, was that a fair, you know, from their point of view, was that a fair TIF agreement, and they did feel it was with market rates of investment returns. So just so you know how that amended and restated agreement was arrived upon, so.
So that, did you, right?
Unless this is tabled, which has been discussed, I'm not willing to vote for this amendment. We are in no obligation to renegotiate this with them. They have a tape, a agreement on the table, and I feel they either need to fulfill the agreement, which I was never in favor of in the first place, or I just think this needs to be discussed more because of everything that went on during this whole project, and I am just not comfortable with it, so unless this is tabled tonight for further discussion, I'm not in favor of it, and I won't be voting for it.
So do you want to make kind of point three your resolution, then?
Let's say that again?
Did you, would you like to make item three the resolution, that the city, that, because item three of the BRICS memo was the city may take any action, including legal, administrative, blah, blah, blah. This includes the option to adopt a resolution approving amended, and so basically, item three would be that you, you push it back to staff and, and be legal to renegotiate it or review it?
Yes.
I think what Councilmember Thompson's saying is that he wants to keep the terms of the original agreement and see if they can comply with those terms.
So if that's the case, I think I would just simply offer a motion to suspend our performance until the defaults are cured, and that's the position that you take for now.
Yeah, I would just, they, they have an agreement on the table, and I would make them stick with the agreement.
So, I mean, you don't want to take any action on amending the agreement?
No, none.
So your, so your motion or resolution is to table the agreement? Table, table this, the resolution that's on the floor at the moment is to accept the amended agreement?
No.
No, there is no resolution on the floor right now. So anybody can make any resolution?
Okay, so we need a resolution to do something?
Right.
I would offer a resolution that we send the development agreement back to city staff for further review.
Tilt them out, then, included in that?
Correct. Then, I mean, I don't think we're ready to make a decision on it tonight, I think it needs more.
Do you just want to table it, table it and?
I think we table it.
Table it and push it back to city staff and legal to review?
Yeah. I feel, I feel that, that their default, they have to, they have to clear that before we make any action at all. If they're in default.
Wasn't, wasn't this from Mary, from Springstead, these three options, so?
Yeah, Your Honor, members, I, I don't think I'm doing a good enough job of making myself clear, and so I'm trying, but keep asking the right questions.
What was number one?
Number one, so the first option we have is to, the agreement we have in place today, which is four buildings, 180 units, and a, I don't know off the top of my head what the dollar amount for, $1.62 million in tax increment financing. That's, option number one would be for us to suspend our performance under that agreement until the developer can come out of default. The developer will not be able to cure the default for two reasons. One, they don't intend to build 180 units or four buildings, and two, they've already assigned the property without the consent of the city, and that's one of the obligations under the agreement. Second option that the, that the city has is to cancel and rescind that original agreement, so that would be taking away all of the TIF and have no agreement in place. If you take that option, you lose, you'll likely lose the trail easement and some of the other things that are involved. The third option is to direct staff and the attorney to work to prepare a amended agreement of, and you guys are going to have to give us some guidance as to what that looks like, whether you have a dollar amount in mind or a percentage in mind, so then we could go back and make the necessary changes and then bring those before the city council. Those are the three options, I, I hope that makes more sense.
I think that's probably clear.
And I think what's confusing, was confusing, Your Honor, this is that I, I thought this was the recommendation coming from staff, but, you know.
I, I would say, Your Honor, Councilmember Speedall, that's the request of the developer, and the developer's requesting to amend the agreement to capture the TIF related to the building that they have built, and that's where we got that number from, and then like Finance Director Sonmore mentioned, Springstead ran the analysis based on the actual valuation of the building and what that looks like, and those are the numbers that are in the packet, but you guys certainly have the ability to do something different, or, you know, the three options I outlined.
So. I'll make it, I'm going to make a motion that we accept proposal, third item, where we recommend this tailing back to staff to review. I guess I'm not sure on a dollar amount, but to review and come back with a proposal before the council.
So number three of Mary's suggestion?
Correct.
Is it Mary that gives those three?
That's my motion.
All right. It's not really helpful to staff to be totally honest. Not to, it's not really helpful to staff, to be totally honest.
No. I think if you're going to. It seems like two motions and one, it's a table and review, right? So I think we need to be clear on that.
Yeah, I think, I think, because what you, from staff's perspective, if you're going to, if we're going to table it, then we have to come up with some guidance. So whether that's, you know, 50% of the TIF value that's in the amended stated, you know, I think Andrew said it was $390,000.
For $89.
Obviously a dollar is a dollar.
$89,100.
Okay. So.
We have two motions right now, but we're second to each one of them.
I, well, to explain my reasoning, I don't, I mean, I don't feel like we've arrived
at the correct amount of TIF. I think there's further discussion that needs to be had around that amount.
Do we just simply want to table it? I mean, we can table it, we have time to table it.
Your Honor, or that discussion could happen right now, if you so desire. There's no, there's nothing indicating we have to act on the material that's in the packet. That's just one proposal, so to speak, or one example of what you could do.
What I am hearing is that that is not what you want to do tonight, is take that action that's in the packet.
Correct.
So that is not on the table. So what it does sound like is that you want staff to do something different and come back with a different proposal, but not that proposal. And what the proposal that was before you gave a specific dollar amount, what I think I hear you're saying is you don't want that dollar amount, you want something less. And so what I think staff needs is some type of instruction as to what percentage of that dollar figure it is that you would find acceptable in considering an amended agreement. So you've tabled the issue. There's been, I think that was the first motion that was made, and I think you can take the first motion up on tabling the issue. And so I think you should take that, take action on that, on that motion. But I also think you should also discuss amongst yourselves or discuss here now what percentage you're thinking that the city should be looking at in reviewing this with our attorney, Mary Able.
Point of clarification, if I could? Is it, are we dealing with H9 or unique properties?
Yeah, Your Honor, members, that's a great question. The agreement that we have in place today is with unique opportunities, and one of the actions that we have to take if we want to is to assign that agreement to the new owner, which is H9. You wouldn't have to do that, and this conversation is probably all moot point at that, at that point. But the agreement that we have in place is with unique opportunities. So we either assign it to H9 and then, you know, work through an agreement with H9, or we take action to amend the agreement with unique opportunities and then assign it to H9. So however, Rolf, I don't know if you have a suggestion.
So can I try a motion and put on the table for discussion?
Second this motion.
Did you second that one? Did you second it?
When was Tom's motion? Because I think we forgot that.
Motion to table and send back to staff, but on review.
I'll second that and then, so let's, you can second that and then we can, we can, you know, we can vote on it, then we can have the discussion afterwards.
Oh, Your, yeah. Your Honor, if you table it, then the discussion's got to end.
Right, okay.
So we'd have to.
We'd have to vote it down.
We'd have to vote it down.
Motion to table and put another motion in.
Yeah, or we can ask Mr. Rupert if we'd rescind his motion.
I, I will rescind that motion.
I will too.
That motion is not rescinded. And then we had a second, a second motion on the table.
I would think we could do that.
That wasn't seconded, was it?
Died first, seconded.
So I'd like to propose another motion, Your Honor, and that is that we send this back to staff to reassess the TIF and the dollar amount, assigning it to H9, and to bring that back to council. To reassess the TIF and the dollar amount and assign it to H9 and bring it back to council.
Mr. Fish has a question.
Do we want to have a meeting with the council and staff in a work session to go through this?
I think it's a bigger issue.
It's bigger issue than what we can do here tonight, I believe. I think we need a work session on it.
It's, you know.
It's either seconded or it dies. I don't think we can discuss the motion.
We don't have a second.
What was your motion again?
My motion was to send this back to staff to reassess the TIF and the dollar amount and reassign it to H9 and then to bring it back for discussion to council.
And I think, I think staff's issue with that is that they still need some guidance on.
Because we, we can't reassess the dollar amount unless we know what you want to reduce it to.
Yeah.
Because the way we assess it is we take, here's the building value, and then the county assessor between them and Springstead helps us come up with, this is what increment that will generate. So that's what's in your packet, is the reassess with the information we know. But then, if you tell us X percent below that, then we have something to work with that we can go reassess. Otherwise, you know, we will just be grasping at something without direction. So that's the little struggle of that.
They actually need a number.
I think you should have Rod rescind his motion until we discuss what percentage it's going to be, so then you can make a one-shot deal.
Nobody's seconded it.
So obviously, obviously, we're all, I'm not in favor, and I don't think anybody, a couple of us aren't in favor of doing anything, but we got to negotiate this, we got to make something work. So where are you going to start at? 10%? 5%? 50%? I mean, get it out there, talk about it. Rod, what do you think? We, somebody's got to, we start the process. We kick it down the road like we've been doing all.
I told, I told Olson 50%.
Yeah, and I, I don't agree with that, but where are you guys at at it? Somebody's got to bring something out so they can come back, and we're just wasting our time.
50% is a valid number.
I'm just not willing to negotiate with them at all. They've got an agreement on the table. I think they need to abide by the agreement. And if that means that they have done it and they went into default, then they're not entitled to anything. I do believe that there's a lot more that's went on here, and I do not believe they're entitled to anything. I would not have, we should have checked into these people a lot more than we did when we gave them the TIF in the first place. And they've got, we've got an agreement with them for four buildings. We keep our face, we tell them, you abide by the agreement, we will still go with it, you build four more, you, three more buildings. That's it. I'm not willing to negotiate anything other than that.
In other words, Mr. Thompson, that, to accomplish that, you could suggest a motion to suspend performance, the city's performance, under the contract until the defaults are cured.
If that's what it is, then yes, I make that motion.
Now we need a second for that.
All that that means is the city would not be paying TIF dollars yet until these defaults are cured. And if they cure the defaults, fine. It doesn't mean that the city can't continue to renegotiate or come back with an amended statement down the road, but at least it's some action taken tonight.
I'll second it just to discuss it. Is that all right?
Yep.
Could I ask a question, Your Honor?
Yeah.
Originally, we had a problem with the amount of land and the green space that was raised early on with the four buildings. I don't know if you remember, those of you who remember that. So if, my question is if we actually are going to do this and hold them to the agreement as Mr. Thompson has asked, then what happens to the, the problem with the size of putting those buildings without enough green space and not enough space to turn emergency vehicles around in there? What happens to that? We have a problem on that side if we hold them to this. I'm just raising a question, you know, because it wasn't adequate, it wasn't adequate, that space isn't adequate to put those buildings there and have play space, et cetera, and safety. That's why we, we started to question originally.
Your Honor, Councilmember Speedo, that issue doesn't go away because if they were going to cure the default and live up to their end of the agreement, they would have to plat the property with four different parcels because there's three additional buildings that would have to be built, and the city council and the planning commission would be the ones reviewing the plat in that case. And ultimately, the city council would have to decide if they would approve a plat. And based on the conversation we had previously, we denied a plat because of the lack of green space. So that issue is still one that they would have to work through to come into compliance with the original agreement.
Your Honor, so if we passed Councilmember Thompson's motion tonight, that would, we'd be, for now, continuing with the original agreement until they clear the defaults. But at any time that the council chose, we could offer, or we could amend the agreement. So we're not tying ourselves to any course of action right now, we're just keeping the status quo.
Other than, we're stating that if they, if they apply, if they comply with the original agreement, which would be building four buildings, then this, this TIF agreement would be in place. However, as they assigned it without our approval, it's still in default. And that's improved, that they'd have to probably, I'm assuming, sell it back.
Yeah, I just, we just need to have more discussion around this issue, and I think that would give us time to do so. I would support that.
So with that, we can call for Rolf?
A motion, do you want a roll call or a motion?
Let's have a.
We should do a roll call.
Have a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
No.
Speedo.
No.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
No.
You have five affirmative.
Good.
So the motion is approved. So. Item six would be the outreach resolution approving a setback variance for a property located on 309 South Vine Street as requested by Outstate Brewing Company. And I was the one that asked for this to be pulled from the agenda because I wanted to insert language that just says that the, the variance is approved subject to, you know, final approval by the DNR. Because in this particular instance, it's unique in that because it's closest to the river. The DNR has made an initial review, it then had to go to city zoning, and then after being approved by the city zoning, it then has to go back to the DNR. And as we do not control the DNR yet.
It never will.
Then, you know, the, obviously, the zoning could get rescinded by the DNR. And so that would be my amendment to add the language that it's subject to final approval by, by the DNR. So I'd make that as a resolution.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. So with that, we call for.
Could I ask clarification? That's my role. Our engineer and our planner didn't insert that language for some reason, and it appears, and I'm wondering what you might know that they don't know about the DNR, or, or maybe what you could tell us about this. Does this have implications? Is this the language you want from the staff side, from the technical side? Is that what you want?
I mean, I will say the DNR does have the final say on this, but for all intents and purposes, every discussion we've had with DNR is that they, they have stated that they do not have any concerns or comments about that.
So why are we trying to do their job?
Way in on that.
I think it's part of the process. The process requires the permit application to be submitted that the, that the city approves, and ultimately, as my understanding is, the DNR reviews that as one additional checkbox that it needs to review for its final determination as to whether it will ultimately draft the variance. So, so you're simply just saying.
This seems confusing to me. If the city doesn't need it, why are we asking for an additional? If you want it, we can pass it, I guess.
It's no, no matter to staff. I mean, at the end of the day, DNR has to approve it anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Moving on to presentation of claims, and we'll call upon, well, we'll look for a resolution.
I'll offer it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions, obviously, ask Bill. As there are no questions for Bill. He's looking disappointed, he's looking sad.
I'm not sad. I'm okay.
I was going to ask about the 62 cents on there.
Yeah.
With that, roll call.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution approved. No board committee or department reports, there are no reports from staff or administrative offices, there is no old or unfinished business, there is no new business. So we move to miscellaneous announcements. And tomorrow evening, there is a public open house regarding the East Mount Faith Area Reconstruction Project. Obviously, on December 24th, it is Christmas Eve, and City Hall will be open until noon, library will be open until 1:00, and the liquor store will be open until 5:00. And then on December 25th, it is Christmas Day, and so all city facilities will be closed. On December 26th, it will be Boxing Day. And on December 31st, it will be New Year's Eve, and City Hall will be open from 8:00 till 4:30, the library 9:00 till 6:00, and the liquor store 9:00 till 8:00. And on January 1st, it is New Year's Day, and all city facilities will be closed. The next council meeting will be January 7th. There will not be a committee of the whole meeting in the first Wednesday of January. And with that, it leaves us to bid you all a good holiday season and safe travels. Just out of interest, did the city get any extra money for DUI patrols this year?
We're good residents here, we don't take to those kind of activities.
If you are partying, get a designated driver or use one of the taxis. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Good answer.
Yeah.